Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Everman City Council to order. It is Tuesday, December the ninth, 2025, and the time is six o'clock. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence, five to five pence allegiance.
First item, agenda's consent agenda.
Item A is minutes from the regular meeting from November eleventh, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Let's pull the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is financials.
And Mayor and Council on the financials, we began a new fiscal year. As you recall with the budget, we're using the new software. Uh, when Susan went to go do financials, we have to first close out the budget and do a bunch of steps in there that she was finally able to get done today uh, in working with OpenGov, so there are no financial reports for your consideration tonight, but next week you should get both October and November at the same time. But it was just because of the new software rollout, she was working with OpenGov to get everything done in this new software that needed to be done in order to complete a financial report appropriately, so no financials tonight.
Next time presentations, we have none. Uh, next time Susan's comments.
You have Johnny Allen.
Uh, yes, I um, sent an email a couple of weeks ago, well before Thanksgiving, regarding a complaint that one of the businesses had. And I forwarded it, I forwarded it, and uh, the problem is that uh, they never received um, any, any information regarding their complaints until I sent, uh, inquired a second time. And then instead of sending the um, information to the business, they sent it to me. Now my concern is um, what the procedure or process is when a business or a resident has a complaint? And how long does it take for you to respond? Because I've also gotten information that uh, people call and they never get a call back or, or anything. And so I would like for the city to review their process for as returning calls and uh, letters. Thank you.
Do you want me to give a statement on policy or facts on that, or go ahead?
Okay, a statement on policy and facts, the complaint reached out to the police department that night who responded to the incident and corresponded with them, the owner, so they got immediate response from our police department and our fire marshal's office immediately on those same exact complaints that were submitted to, to you as well as the mayor, as well as me, so there has been significant correspondence with it. Um, you were copied so that you were aware of.
Well, I was, no, they, I, I received.
Okay, we can't, we can't deliberate.
Not open for discussion.
I was not copied on anything, they, you sent me the email.
Yes.
Okay, you know what, we're done, we're done.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're gonna stop it right here. We're, we're getting off topic, not gonna allow that to happen. Discussion items, item A, monthly staff reports, item one, police department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Well, um, actually have the PowerPoint presentation tonight. Got off and left it last month, didn't get to have it.
Please speak to the microphone.
Can you, okay, I don't wanna blow you up.
You won't, his speaker's facing that way.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we've got uh, before you, you have a more detailed overview of what our activity was for the month of November, but just wanted to hit the highlights of, of what uh, the, the major events were, have been in the last month. On our uh, calls for service, they uh, they went up a little bit. We ended up with uh, one thousand six hundred and forty-eight calls for service that the police department responded to. In with that, we, we have a parenthesis. In uh, in with that, we break it down into crimes against persons, assaults, fights, things like this. Those actually went down quite a bit. We responded to uh, only one aggravated assault involving some pretty substantial injuries and one sexual assault for the month. But both of those offenses actually occurred in the city of Fort Worth. They just got reported here and they, they were turned it over to Fort Worth. We go to uh, on the property crimes, um, burglary, vandalism, theft, things like this, uh, they also were reduced. Officers responded to three burglaries in progress, uh, one of which ended up with an arrest. And then we had two burglary motor vehicles, which is down quite a bit. Both of those cars were unlocked. Again, locking your car is the easiest way in the world to prevent a burglary of motor vehicle. Most of the time they don't wanna smash the glass, they just, they're looking for open doors. We go into the general disorder crimes. Noise disturbances are the, the biggest culprit here. Uh, we ended up with eight general disturbance calls, almost all of those were noise. We had twelve domestic disturbances, we had a total of four fight calls, which is down. Three of those were school related. We go to the one that a lot of people don't really understand, traffic related activity. Our traffic crashes are down quite a bit. We had a total of six crashes last month, which is very low. One of those was major, injuries involved, and the others were, uh, well, we had one hit and run, the others were very minor. Part of that is because our traffic enforcement is up. Our officers engaged in two hundred and sixty-seven traffic stops for the month of November. Out of that, a hundred and eighty-two of those contacts resulted in citation, eighty-five resulted in warnings. It, it has been widely documented that there's a direct correlation between increased traffic enforcement and decreased accident activity. It decreases the number of accidents you have, it also reduces the severity of the accidents that you have. The property damage is less, the injuries are less. It, it causes people to be more aware of their driving, and they drive a little bit safer when they know there's aggressive traffic enforcement. Traffic enforcement is also viewed as a crime prevention measure, people don't realize that. But every time, every time somebody is coming in with ill intent, if they drive through town, they see an officer on a traffic stop, they don't wanna run a risk of being stopped. So they, they tend to shy away a little bit more. Our officers also assisted outside agencies again this month. Uh, we were requested six different times assisting Tarrant County Sheriff's Office, Forest Hill, and Fort Worth PDs. On our, uh, little update on our staffing, Officer Jennifer Prius has successfully completed her field training and is now assigned to patrol on her own without having to drag along a field training officer with her everywhere she goes. She's happy about that and, and she's, she's doing great, a very, very good addition to the department. Officer Ryans is still in field training, he's still got several more weeks to go, but we're getting great reviews from him, from his training officers. Little bit of training update, uh, I told you before that we were planning to do the active shooter training uh, in uh, probably November. That was completed. Our officers with the, the cooperation of the school district were able to use one of the school campuses for active shooter training. Adds a little more realism, they get used to the delay of the, of the school, worked out very well. We also just completed our annual firearms qualification, uh, just last week, and everybody verified that they can shoot. Now, we've got a uh, a bonus crime prevention tip, because it's Christmas. After unwrapping the packages, you gotta get rid of the, the boxes. Please don't leave them laying out by the trash like this. That's, that's a sign. You might as well put a sign out there that says, hey, look what we've got for Christmas, come take it. Cut the boxes down, turn them inside out, get them down to where you can't see what you got, and anybody knows what that box had in it. And bad guys figure this out really quickly. This is truly an open invitation for the bad guys to come in and remove whatever you just got. We don't want them to do that. We don't want the Grinch coming in, we don't want them around town, we don't want them in your house. We want them in our house. This is where the bad guys belong, we need to make sure they stay there. Just a little bit, an e, an easy tip, just watch what you're putting out by your curb. Any questions?
You say that time and channel again, but if you can pass by and you see TV boxes and everything.
We've, we've been saying that since the seventies that I know of. And we're, and we're still, still saying, people, they just don't think about it. They don't think like burgers. That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is animal services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so we've been busy, um, November and December, it's, it's, it's been, it's, it's been busier than it's been uh, for a while. We did a total intake in November, we took in fifty-three dogs. Um, and eighteen of those came from Everman. Uh, we took in twenty cats, uh, twenty-three of them here came from Everman. But we did really well with our positive outcomes. Um, the adoptions in the shelter, we only showed two, which was one less from last year. But Mindy and her team with the mobile adoption center got out seventeen dogs, which was just incredible. Returned owners at the shelter, that's people coming up to the shelter and getting their dogs back. Uh, we returned eight, and in the field, our officers returned three. And then uh, transferred to rescue organizations, they took in eleven, which was three less than last year. But um, just like us, how full we are, rescues are super full too right now, so we're all, we're all trying to work together and kinda struggling with that a little bit. Uh, but they did an, they did an outstanding job getting the animals out. Our positive outcomes for cats, um, we had zero adoptions, zero um, mobile adoptions, zero returned owners, but, and, but we did transfer seven out to rescue groups, and we TNR'd five, which we only brought in twelve cats, so it's, um, that was, that was a pretty good turnaround. Our live release rate, um, so we broke that down again like we talked about last time in tiers, you know, tier ones are healthy adoptable animals, are healthy adoptable dogs, we had seventeen of them. And out of the seventeen, we had a hundred percent live release rate. Uh, we had fourteen tier two dogs, which are a little harder to move, um, either because of slight behavior, slight medical, or they're hard to move because of their breed, because some, uh, like they're harder to get into apartment complexes or rental houses because they might ban them, so they're a little bit harder to move. But we got, out of the fourteen, ninety-three percent were live released. And then we had twenty tier three dogs, which was kinda high, we had a lot of not as nice dogs this month. But sixty-five percent of those got out, and most of those were the medical ones. Our live release for cats, we had four tier one cats, super healthy, you know, cats, a hundred percent live release rate. We had one tier two, which was a hundred percent, and we had fourteen tier three, which are your feral cats, um, fifty-three percent of them. And the other, the ones that got out, of course, was our TNR program. Uh, we received one thousand six hundred and thirteen phone calls, which was up six hundred from last year. I don't know, I'd just been too friendly on the phone and everybody wants to talk.
It's like, who, who answers all these phone calls?
Um, and it was up, that's up forty percent from last year, so we, we, we took in a lot of calls. Um, our total field calls for service, we did a hundred and eighty-four field calls, um, eleven in Edgewood Village, a hundred and eight in Forest Hill. Uh, we didn't do any outside of our jurisdiction, we did sixty-five here in Everman and zero in Kennedale. And then the field breakdown for the calls, this, this is, this breaks down letting you know what we're doing um, in our city. And as you can see, we had like one complaint of a cruelty, um, we had one bite that happened, we had uh, two vicious animal calls, uh, and we had uh, fourteen special assignments. We had sit, four, I'm sorry, four sick or injured animals, um, one nuisance, that's like barking dogs or something like that. Where we get most of our calls is loose animal calls, we had twenty-one loose animal calls and eleven deceased animal calls, um, eight, eight animals were confined and we had two close patrols. And then um, the dog intake and um, cat intake, you can, that, that way you can see, um, the red is this year and how we, last year we had thirty-five dogs and this year we had fifty-two, so we had quite an intake, and cats were nine, and this year we took in twenty, so. I don't know, I guess it was the nice weather or something, but all the dogs and cats decided they wanna go out and play. And then the last page is just some, um, just kinda shows you where our year is compared to last year. And I made them Christmas colors.
So you guys are doing a TNR program now?
Yes, we're doing it on a very limited basis, so if we get, um, we're, what we do is we try to go into a neighborhood, let's say the neighborhood has a prob, a problem with a lot of cats. We try to take like three or four, and we wanna make sure we get those TNR'd, and then we'll re-release those if we do catch them in the trap, but that way we can thin them out, and those three or, then those TNR cats that are in there will start pushing the other cats out, and it'll help maintain it. But we don't wanna overload it with TNR cats, but we're, we're doing a, we're doing a real soft.
Has the, has the feedback on that?
So far, so good.
Okay.
Um, most people are, you know, as long as, you know, I'm not, I'm not releasing a hundred cats back, you know, they definitely don't want that, you know, but just a few of them, um, you know, it, it, most people seem really good with it. I had one that was in a trap just last week, and uh, it had a tipped ear, so I went up and knocked on the door and I explained it to the person who was trapping, and she was totally fine with it, with, with, you know, just a few of the cats being loose.
Ray, for the purposes of the people who are watching this video, what does TNR mean?
Oh, TNR, that's trap neuter return.
Okay.
So what, they trap them, uh, we get them neutered, so they can't reproduce, and then we get them a rabies shot, and then we return them back to where they were found.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Good job.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Next up is fire department.
Mayor, Council, good evening. So, we have got, uh, for the calls for service for the period of time, November tenth through the present. Um, we had total calls for ninety-eight, which is actually consistent, uh, we had a, a chief's meeting, uh, Tarrant County Chief's meeting, uh, last week, and everybody said consistently, everybody's been a little bit slower this year, uh, for the last couple of months than, than, than typical, so knock on wood for everybody, you know, that usually is a predictor for bad, but hopefully not. The uh, average response time for the, for the calls during the period were for fire en route was a, a minute twenty-two, and the total response time to on scene was six minutes and twenty-seven seconds. Uh, for EMS en route was fifty-three seconds, and total response time of four minutes and twenty seconds. Keeping in mind that, um, unfortunately, the, with the limitations of our software, it doesn't allow me to, to, to separate county responses, mutual aid responses to a different jurisdiction from our, our city responses. So hopefully, we're, we're supposed to be migrating to a new software due to a, a new infers reporting data, um, update, so hopefully the new software's gonna allow me to, to further break the information down, to separate it out, to show you just what the in-city responses are, 'cause those are substantially a smaller, uh, number, so. Um, but as it, as it stands, I would have to go through it line by line in order to separate that out, so. Um, I do believe that the one minute and twenty-two second en route time is an anomaly. These are based upon the averages, and so with, if there was an accident, you know, we, we go to a fire and one of the apparatus checks en route, but he checks en route for both of them, but then accidentally click, don't click, click the button. That appar, that one apparatus has gotten extended in the computer system, and so it's just an anomaly that we have to go through there and just, at us as a QA level to ensure that there's not any anomalies in there that increase our averages.
So this, this came up last month, and I should've met with you offline, wanted to ask you this, but um, when Lieutenant Newton was here, the question came up about the response times, and what I was curious about is, we know that we have a high percentage of duplicate call, in other words, your unit's already assigned to a call, another call's coming out.
Mm-huh.
Right? Is, is this, is the calculation count, accounting for that?
It should not be, the, the, the averages that, of the reports that I run are specific to the medic nineteen, truck nineteen, tanker nineteen, for specific Everman units, and so it wouldn't, it, when the CAD selects engine twenty-three or medic twenty-six, as long, those numbers shouldn't play into our averages.
Okay, okay.
Now, I'm not an IT guy, so you never know, like, there, it could possibly, but in theory, no it shouldn't. The uh, total, and by the way, I, I actually updated this, uh, important department stats and times, so it's all encompassing, so just, there's a reason why I've included training hours up here as well. Uh, so the total of training hours completed within that, that time period is eighty-four hours. Um, uh, we have, we've got, obviously got standards for, for the state, so we've gotta make sure that the guys do four, sixteen hours, uh, four to sixteen hours a week, and thirty-two hours a month between the crew, so it's, uh, they've got high training standards that ISO recommends and best practices recommend, so that's what we've implemented into, into policy. The incident breakdown, um, the fire type incident, building, vehicle, grass, et cetera is four, none of them were in city. I'm gonna take a cue from Chief Brooks's book, I'm gonna blame that on fire prevention for the zero, with the in-city fire events, just gonna throw that out there. Mayor, just, he just gave you the, don't, don't call that one, he just gave me the look. Uh, medical emergencies at a total sixty-five, uh, motor vehicle accidents at eight. All reminder that that does include the, the county responses, so we had a, a pretty good accident, a pretty uh, high velocity down off Dick Press a couple of weeks ago, so. Hazardous conditions, uh, two, and the other catch-all is nineteen. Regarding staffing, uh, we did have one firefighter paramedic resignation. Uh, he resigned from us to go to Allen Fire Department. We wish him well in all his ventures, um, but we were fortunate that we did have an eligibility list, and so we were able to select one that was from the list, and gave him a job offer, and uh, to see the, the young kid glow like, uh, we all used to do at the beginning of our careers was pretty nice. He's got a start date of December twenty-first. Um, he'll be on eight-to-fives until January second, so he'll be actually coming to the station every day, working with each crew. They get a good baseline with him, a good understanding of how we operate. Um, we'll, we'll start to, to give him the, the thirty-thousand-foot view of all of our EMS and our policies and protocols, um, and let him start digesting those before he comes on the shift, um, assigned to A shift, um, starting on January second. Other updates, uh, Lieutenant Newton and firefighter paramedic Jordan, they were able to go up to Ohio and conduct the final inspection on our pneumatic. If you check the big screen out, we've got a couple of photos that were sent to me.
Oh, wow.
This is a, a Bron, it's a, the, the ambulance box portion of the truck is, is almost identical to the current truck. We wanted to make everything, uh, to, to a degree as exact as they could be. Uh, that way whenever they swap out, nobody gets confused on anything. Um, this, the, the only difference is this is a Ford chassis, um, but we were, in order to reduce wear and tear and operational costs, we did go with all, we, everything that's not a big, big fire truck, it's gas, uh, motor, so that way we don't have to worry about all of the governmental DEF regulations and whatnot, so this is a big gas motor, but a very, very nice truck. Uh, we were fortunate, um, firefighter Jordan is actually employed with our now, um, preventative maintenance Simpson fire apparatus. That's actually how we found him, um, and he has been a firefighter paramedic and an emergency vehicle technician, he's certified a level-two EBT. Um, and the guys that, uh, he worked with was at Simpson, were the, uh, EBTs for Grand Prairie Fire Department. So we're fortunate, 'cause they, they gave, they gave the kudos to our guys of how professional they were, how knowledgeable they were. Uh, there was even a comment of, I'm pretty sure that Jordan probably knows more than, more about the apparatus than some of the techs that were talking to him during inspection. So it was, it was nice to hear, uh, the high regard that they were receiving.
I just love the fact that there's snow on the ground up there in Ohio in these pictures, and it's almost seventy degrees today down here, that's great.
If you, if you, uh, I, I posted it on, on the emergency services Facebook page, if you check that out, the one I did include, and he, they were going through the photos, and there was one of them coming in, and it was snow covered everywhere, send that to me, I gotta include that in the post, so that's on the, on the emergency services post as well. But we, we expect to be able to take delivery of that towards the end of the month. It, it actually should be here, um, in, in the DFW area, uh, but they haven't, they've gotta replace the bumper, they gotta replace the wheels, they gotta do all the decals and whatnot, so hopefully by the end of the month we'll take delivery. And just, uh, just for y'all's peace of mind, the, it's to, it, hopefully to, it's, it, I'll spit it out in a second, to extend the service life of both of our ambulances. We have an operational plan of one month on, one month off, and so they are constantly alternating so that they last as long as humanly possible for these apparatus to last, so. Um, hopefully we can get a solid good five, six years out of both of them. The, we will begin, once we take delivery of this and get it in service, we're going to start the, the new grant-funded large brush truck, the, the sixty-five hundred. That one was awarded to us, uh, about six months ago. Uh, we've kinda put it on the back burner, one truck at a time, can only, can only deal with so much stress at once. So that one's gonna be real fun, we're gonna start that in January. And then last but not least, we were notified last week, uh, another award of a grant for twenty-five thousand of, uh, fire equipment, fire, not PPE, but fire service equipment, um, that was awarded through the state, so I've accepted that award, and I've got a, that's gonna be a spillover, if there's any overages on the, on the brush truck, I'll, I'm gonna cover those funds with that, but if not, then we'll, we'll get the, uh, the trucks all updated, uh, extrication for, equipment.
That's good. Very good.
That's all we got.
Excellent, thank you.
Next up is public works.
That's me, I'm gonna do my best. Uh, so this month they were very busy, um, public works department completed some routine park and building maintenance, um, did a lot of work preparing for the Christmas market, including installing all the lights, wreaths, and banners that you see around town, um, making sure that all the, uh, equipment that went inside for the winter wonderland was operational and functional. Also had to conduct inspections and maintenance of storm drains, uh, cut and disposed of several tree limbs around the historical building, removed and installed a temporary stop sign at Race Street in Bell, removed construction debris from the street in Forest Hill and Enon, uh, worked the fall citywide cleanup, uh, that occurred in November, and then reinforced privacy screen at the baseball field, replaced some damaged flags in Memorial Park, and then of course, set up the civic center for three different events that occurred this past month. Just some pictures, I, I know the public works guys worked really, really hard, um, particularly the street guys, on setting up everything for Christmas, that's a, that's a ton of work for them to do, so they did a very good job. Water department, uh, completed their routine, uh, well, well reports and meter reading, uh, did three meter change outs, one service line to main repair, uh, replaced four curb stops, winterized the well lots, fixed a leak in the chlorine room, uh, worked the fall citywide cleanup, and then obviously supported the streets department with the install of the lights, wreaths, and Christmas decorations around town, as well as help out with the event itself. I love it when Gilbert includes pictures in his presentations because this, this says a lot about the guys. You know, the, the water guys and the street guys work really hard, but you couldn't pay me enough to jump inside the wall, the, the deep, deep holes that they had to jump inside to, to repair a main leak, and all you can see in one of these pictures is his head sticking up out of the water. So the, the work that these guys go through is, uh, is pretty intense, so. Especially in the months of November and December, I wouldn't wanna do that, so. Kudos to them for, for a busy month, but they got a lot done.
Okay, next item, item V is review, discussion, and city council consideration deliberation on proposed uses for fifty-first year CDBG grant funds.
Last month we discussed this, and council's direction was go back and look at other eligible projects. Gilbert and I did just that, and we had a couple of meetings with our city engineer about potential eligible projects, and it boils down to essentially this. Either option A, which is we could utilize the funds to redo the walking track around Pittman Park, or B, the next most eligible identified project that we could move forward with in enough time is, is a water line replacement, a standard water round replacement of one of our residential water mains. Um, those are really the only two options that are feasible this late in the game without engineers having to come in and, and do a lot of prep work as far as environmental studies. So staff recommendation would be to look to, uh, complete the Pittman Park walking track with these funds, um, and make those dollars stretch as far as we can at redoing the track, 'cause we feel that that's the, the most supportive need. Uh, we do have, uh, several identified water lines that, or water mains that could use replacement, but they're not identified as, as a need for replacement currently, so. That would be our recommendation. Any other projects, we're just getting a little too hinky when you start using HUD dollars because they're very, very specific use dollars.
So are we okay with the walking track, getting that done?
How much longer do you think the lines would hold for the war?
All the lines have several years left in them. None of them have been identified as an urgent need for replacement or anything. I don't think any of them are even, I think all the ones that have been identified in the previous capital improvement plan that was associated with our impact dollars, all those residential water mains have been completed. The items that, with the water department that need upgrade well surpass what this grant could help fund, and those include water service mains along Forest Hill Drive, water service connection to the city of Fort Worth. But those projects, we're talking half million to millions of dollars to complete. This grant wouldn't touch that, and I don't think the city's in a position right now to fund the difference or a gap in that just yet. So it would be our recommendation this year as to not let these funds slip through. The best use is likely going to be at Pittman Park.
I think you've got a consensus on the walking track.
Yeah.
Next item. Item C, review, discussion, and potential updates related to the City of Everman travel and training policies.
All right. Following our last meeting, I did make one edit to this that we discussed this last meeting, and that was related to the desire or request for employees to want to, when they travel, maybe use an Airbnb. The policy now says underneath lodging that if an employee elects or has a desire to do alternative lodging, they will do so at their own expense, and the city would reimburse the GSA rate for that specific location, up to the GSA rate, no more. So that should cover us on that issue. Otherwise, there's been no other changes to this policy from our last meeting. So unless you have any requested edits, then at our next regular council meeting, we'll look to Victoria to draft a resolution for you to formally adopt this as a city policy effective in January.
I have two comments. Up under transportation, B, two, that is IRS, that is GSA?
Give me just one second.
Are you having that in?
Yes.
That is IRS.
Yes, it is IRS.
It's an IRS rate, not a GSA?
Yes.
Up under D, you mentioned that if meals, if breakfast and lunch is included in a conference of training, why would any money be given for breakfast or lunch?
It wouldn't. It would be deducted.
Well, I mean, why would, I mean, well, why would you get anything for breakfast if they're providing breakfast?
Well, no, no, we wholeheartedly agree with you. They shouldn't get breakfast, but as it stands today, the per diem is flat rate. So they're going to get a flat rate per diem, which cuts, which covers all meals. We currently, our current policy does not account for if breakfast or lunch are provided to employees as a part of the registration fee. This policy will account for that, meaning that if breakfast or lunch are included as a part of the registration fee for a conference that they're attending, then we would deduct those percentages from the standard per diem. So that way, essentially, we're not double dipping, right? That's the goal.
Anything else, Johnny?
Okay, we drop down to item A, consideration of possible action. Item A, resolution number 2025-12-01, the resolution of the City Council of City of Everman, Texas, authorizing the installation of a commemorative plaque provided by the Six Flags Chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, directing that the plaque be installed on the northernmost pad area within Everman Memorial Park, authorizing the city manager to execute any necessary documents, providing for an effective date. And that's it. So.
Susan's passing this around.
I will entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve resolution number 2025-12-01 as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
The picture that you're seeing is of the giant marker that we, that the chapter had installed at the downtown courthouse, the 1895 courthouse. The one that will be installed in our park is smaller, but it has the same words. It's got the same scroll and everything. I believe it's 24 by 24, so it's actually square.
Did we get that donated to us, or they offered to put it in our memorial?
We're looking to put, the chapter is looking to put another one in. And I talked to the city manager and the mayor, and they said that our memorial park would be a good place to commemorate the 250th anniversary of our nation for the Everman people. So we're proceeding on that. The chapter is going to purchase the plaque. Okay.
Any other discussion? Would you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye, if I can vote.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item. Item B, resolution number 2025-12-02, a resolution of the City Council of City of Everman, Texas, approving and adopting the job description for the position of kennel technician, part-time, and providing an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I move, excuse me, I move we approve resolution number 2025-12-02 as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Have anything been added or taken away from, or just a little?
Well, no, it's a position that was created as a part of the budget actually two years ago, but we never formally adopted a job description for this position, and we need to do so. So the job description is proposed. The position is currently vacant as it stands right now, but in reviewing potentially posting this position, we learned that there's not an approved job description by council, so this will fill that.
Any other discussion? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item. Item C, resolution number 2025-12-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, approving an interlocal agreement with the city of Fort Worth for design, construction, and installation of various pedestrian, bicycle, and roadway multimodal model, safety improvements within the city of Everman and providing effective date.
Mayor, before you entertain a motion on this, I want to make something, just a clarity point. I placed this on the agenda for council consideration tonight, because the city of Fort Worth has expressed a desire to try to move fairly rapidly on this. However, they are still undergoing a legal review on this and have not gotten back to me. I was hopeful to get their legal response prior to the meeting tonight, but did not get it. So council can proceed with approving this resolution as it currently is written, understanding that if the city of Fort Worth has any substantial changes to this, it will have to go back through Victoria for a legal review, and then ultimately may have to come back to you again at a later date. So you can either choose to approve it as it is tonight, or choose to table the item until we get that legal review back, but that means it probably won't come before you until January.
Can you explain where the bicycle tracks, oh, just to see it right there, on Oak Grove Road, Everman?
So this is the, this is that Safe Streets Program grant that is going to provide for a network of sidewalks and shared paths, shared paths being designed for both pedestrian and bicycle traffic. It will connect Pittman Park to Everman High School, and then the schools on Oak Grove Road to Rinden Road, to Baxter Junior High. This is that, it is a $10 million grant in which there is a match requirement to go along with this. Part of that match is being met with transportation credits. I'm not an expert in transportation credits, but apparently, we have about $450,000 worth of credits that we are going to, with this agreement, grant to the city of Fort Worth, since they're overseeing the project, to use towards this project. That leaves a remaining balance of $263,000 that the city of Everman would be responsible for, half of which upon the commencement of construction, the other half of which upon completion of construction. We are not anticipating construction to begin until well into fiscal year 2027, and it would be my recommendation, because much of this project is well within the TIF zone, and it is a TIF-eligible project, that we look to the TIF fund to be able to fund this project rather than a general fund. So I don't have any heartburn about the $263,000. However, it would be subject to TIF board approval, and ultimately, your approval as well. And neither one of those approvals have been made yet. So just know that if this is approved, and for whatever reason, TIF denies it, you deny it later, that would have to come from general fund.
Okay, so do we have this amount in the TIF fund?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, then you're saying that there's a possibility that it would not be approved?
If the TIF board and the council decided not to approve the use of those funds, then the city would have to utilize general fund to meet its obligation within this aisle.
Right.
I don't foresee that happening, but I can't predict what you will do. So I'm just making sure I'm giving you all the caveats here.
And do the, do we have the money in the general fund, or is this going to be kind of allocated over years?
There is.
Except it's not going to start until 2027?
There is nothing appropriated currently within the general fund to cover this. If it does have to come from general fund, then we would have to appropriate this amount come the fiscal year 2027 budget process.
Either general fund or street. Okay, so what do we need? We need to decide if we're going to vote, approve, or table? And when you said we'd have to, Fort Worth's going, they have not approved?
What they're reviewing.
Fort Worth will always make us approve the agreement before they take it and put it before their council.
Right.
So we really need to approve it on our end. There were some edits that were changed, that were made here, and it went back to Fort Worth for legal review, asked them to have it back to me by last Wednesday. They were working to do that. I still haven't got it back. I went ahead and placed it on the agenda, hoping I was going to get a response either yesterday or today that they were okay with the changes. I think they will be, because there really weren't any substantial changes that we made other than some clarity items on here. So I don't really foresee them making any changes that are substantial, but if they do, then we would have to bring it back to you for review and approval.
Okay, well, why not table it until you go before the TIF board to see if they will approve it?
That will take a little bit longer than what I think Fort Worth is looking to do, because Fort Worth needs to get an agreement over to COG in order to get this project going and to start publishing RFPs and things for this project. A TIF board approval is probably going to take us about three to six months to complete, because we first, we just completed the TIF board assignments. We first need to get the TIF board together, educated, and caught up to speed before I think we start throwing quarter-million-dollar projects on the table.
And I think we have several funding sources. I don't believe funding is an issue, so it will be covered one way or another.
Okay, well, then, should we go ahead and, let's just vote it in?
Yes.
Yeah. I make the motion to approve resolution number 2025-12-03 as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Do you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item. Item D, ordinance number 845, joint ordinance and boundary agreement between the cities of Everman and Fort Worth. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance, am I on? Yes. Ordinance number 845 as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? You got anything, Craig?
If Fort Worth is repairing the roads and all of that, Everman is responsible for this little piece?
Yes, ma'am. Once this piece is annexed into the city, Everman would be responsible for future maintenance. We have had a verbal commitment from Commissioner Miles's office to help us with repairs and reconstruction of this portion of Enon, once it comes into Everman as a part of the future development that we're trying to get into the city.
Cool.
Any other discussion? Poll the council?
Real quick, hold on, let me just, one thing to clarify. Counsel, you'll be approving this tonight. It will not be effective until the city of Fort Worth obviously approves it. We're sending this back to them. It will likely be on their January agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that although you're approving this ordinance tonight, you're only approving your half, it will not become effective until the city of Fort Worth ultimately approves it.
You will be getting calls from me if it's messed up.
I call Fort Worth all the time.
Anything else? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Connective session, we have none. City managers report.
Got just a couple things. First off, the holiday market and tree lighting ceremony this past week, it was great. Definitely got some good feedback, also some mixed feedback and some ideas for next year. So staff is getting ready to meet and debrief on the pros and cons of how things went this year, and hopefully come up with a plan to improve it for next year. So all in all, it was really good. We had a record number of vendors that showed up and signed up, and that was tremendous. So all in all, it was a great event. Secondly, we did receive a letter from the Texas Coalition of Affordable Power today. They are in a financial position, and the TCAP Board of Directors in their November meeting approved a distribution of $750,000 in refunds to membership cities. So therefore, we received a check in the amount of $1,473.44 that we were not expecting as a refund from the Texas Coalition of Affordable Power. So that was an unexpected but pleasant refund from them and good revenue for them. So just wanted to share that, Ms. Margaret Summery, who's the executive director of TCAP, who sent that letter in to us today, so.
Great.
Yes. Other than that, I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Mayor's report, I just want to commend everybody that was involved with the Christmas I know when the children were singing, the tree lighting, that just felt really good. And then I know everybody always enjoys a Santa Claus, you know? We've got a Santa Claus with a real beard. Forest Hills does it. But, and when you see their mayor coming up and sitting on Santa's lap to get her picture taken, because she wants to have one taken with the real Santa Claus, and so kudos to Everman, so. But with that being said, I have nothing else. Time is 6:48, and we are adjourned.